Good afternoon, everyone. I am Mayor Yarmika Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 13th for our regular city council meeting. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Invocation will be led by Councilmember Scott, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Askins. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, dear God, for the rain, and we thank you, dear God, for the sunshine. We thank you, dear God, we all survived, Deborah. We thank you, dear God, for watching over us all night long, and let us be able to come together one more time to meet and take care of the business of the city. We pray to heaven and father, you bless each and every one here this evening. Bless me in a mighty way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Councilmember Askins. Now, Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Yarmika Robinson?
Present.
Mayor, Lieutenant, Paul Sintery?
Present.
Councilmember Lomina Scott?
Present.
Councilmember William Askins?
Present.
Councilmember Juannica Cooper?
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Palin Froski?
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brev?
Present.
Mayor, if I may repeat, four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Motion to adopt.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council members? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve the minutes, approval of the minutes from the mayor and council meeting, July 9th, 2024, special public call meeting held on July 16th, 2024, and special call-in meeting held on July 31st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council members? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. We have no presentations on this evening. Next is our public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for our future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name at the podium and address for the record with the city clerk to counsel. Anyone for public comment period at this time? Well, I will ask everyone to please silence your cell phones if you have not yet so far. Please silence your cell phones.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
I have Chief, good. Our Department, Mr. Brown and the other over at issues that were there in them for it, took the time to come out by YouTube and speak to me what was going on. I don't say technically, I do the one talking to one department. I have a problem with that. We got the post department, we got some good young ladies and men, we got issue with the post department. Well, last year, I asked for some traffic, they give me free food at Dennis Temple, about showed up. Jerry Henne came that year. This year, I said for the youth, try to bring our youth and the police together at Dennis Temple. I had a bunch of kids and I talked to the chief this time, he assured me sort of show up. Two more showed up. I think that's one, this is the second time, it won't be a third time I want to ask no more. What I'm saying is, you're doing a good job, council. Please come out in the neighborhood for the people who you are. I just moved from Way Street to Muffler, I know my councilwoman, the councilwoman is, I don't know who Muffler, you. Okay, thank you, sir. What I'm trying to say, we need, in the past, post departments go down, try to have, we saw that they were cooking hot dogs and hamburgers for the kids over there, they would think, need to add more with the community. And councilmen, councilmen, councilwoman, we got to do the same too. They know who we are. Because I do, I know some of y'all, but the people in your community don't know who we are. But overall, I got no complaint, they're going good, except that issue about the second time, the chief told me out of his mouth, there's one show up, my kids and adults there waiting on the police, but I enough common sense to know what they do to tell them about different things. But I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Did you state your name, sir? I'm sorry. Did you state your name?
My name is Kelly Cooper.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Wilson. Mayor and councilmembers, I want to thank you all for your service. As Director of Community and Workforce Development in Florence County Economic Development Partnership, just want to give you a quick update. My goal is to attend two council meeting visits each year with each municipality in Florence to represent economic development and to serve as a connection to your towns. If you have any needs, please reach out as we may be able to connect you to appropriate parties or assist. Please remember to share what's going on in your town so we can support and share on our social media and reach out to a lot of people in the county. So send me any flyers or pictures or whatever you might have. And we'd also like to extend an offer of making a Lake City video to you to not only showcase Lake City on our economic development website, but also for you to use in your marketing efforts at no cost to you. We're working on a 12-month schedule and would love to get you on the calendar. As you have heard, I'm sure, Florence County has experienced record economic growth in the last 30 months. And as I mentioned at your March council meeting, AESC has invested over $3 billion in capital investment for the new battery plant and have expanded a training center to $25 million for ReadySC to train 2,700 new workers. The total square footage of the new facility will exceed 3 million square feet and represents the largest announcement in the history of our region. For those of you that do not know, AESC Florence specializes in manufacturing advanced electric vehicle batteries, which are designed to power the next generation of zero emission vehicles, contributing to a sustainable and clean energy future. I have flyers with me that I've left on the table in the back to share the announcement of the first mega hiring event on October 3rd at SIMT in Florence. They'll be hiring for both hourly and salary positions over the coming months as they continue to expand. So please share the flyers, take a picture of the QR codes. There's three different QR codes that have three different sets of information. My time's up.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment period? If not, we will move forward with our agenda tonight, and next we will have our legislative portion of our agenda. Mr. William Hall, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council for your consideration.
Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance number 2024.007, final reading, second and final reading. An ordinance to amend the code of city of Lake City, South Carolina, Chapter 16, to add a new subsection, providing that a person who violates any section of the city's code of ordinance with the intent to intimidate another person or persons in whole or in part because of the action of preceding race, color, creed, religion, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, physical or mental disability, or national origin of other person or persons is guilty of the separate offense of hate, intimidation, and shall be punished as provided herein.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.007, excuse me, for second and final reading?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council members?
The very last line shall be punished as provided herein for the public. Can you provide what the punishment will be, depending on what type of crime it is?
Charlie?
Yeah.
It's based on the judge's decision, based on what the state law has set forth, and there's really no state law.
Well, it refers back to the blanket penalty for a violation of any ordinance in the city's code of ordinances, which is not punishable by more than 30 days, and I can pull up the exact fine, but there's a fine, it's either or, but of course, it's decided by a judge, and it's just added on to an underlying offense. So it's not an offense in and of itself that it's added on, so there's an underlying crime, and if that, that can be added on to it. And so there's a fine or a not-to-exceed-30-day jail term that's added to it.
So what you're saying is this person committed, committed a crime, they can determine that it was a hate crime based on these, this information added on to our ordinance?
Okay, I think one of the key words in here, perceived. Now, one person may perceive something one way, and another person may perceive something another way. Can you give an example? Say with, just come up, come up with an example.
I would guess perceived would be based on who was reviewing the affidavit that's being presented to them at the time the police officer is requesting.
So do you think that it could be amended to certain things of possible things that have been considered hate crimes in the past to be more specific?
Charlie? How would you answer that question? I'm not a lawyer.
Well, that's just like, this, this.
Because like perceived could be anything, and you get all.
Thank you, that's perception. I may have perception of a situation. For example, say if, if something occurred in here tonight, as a witness, I may have seen it one way, and someone else may have perceived it another way. So then we get, we get in a.
But that would be taken, that would be taken up in court.
Yes, I mean.
At that time.
See, but see, but think about it, the person, okay, say if somebody is written up or apprehended, depends on what's written on that report. Because oftentimes, people can write down information about a situation that's inaccurate. So when it goes before a judge, then it's this person's job to prove their innocence. But then now, if you have three or four people with the same thing, when you get into the pendulum of justice, well, that person is going to lose, but that person is not necessarily guilty.
But once again, that would be in the court decision.
That's what a jury's for, and they, someone might perceive they were driving by the line, the officer, the officer may perceive it was running a stop sign, stop sign, the driver may not have. And so that's, that's what, the charge would be added to an underlying crime, let's say a theft or a murder or whatever it may be. And so that would just be included in the indictment or the charge, and then a jury or a judge would decide whether it was, hey, they would do that same house if you went through, have witnesses say it was driven by this protected class or not. And so they would have opportunity to themselves and that sort of thing. And the fine is, it's under the code, it's 30 days, as I mentioned, $500 is the max fine, which is, that's the fine for all, any violation of the code.
So, all right. That fine is, is what council in the past has?
Yeah, yeah, that's been, since 1983. At least, that's when it was codified.
For Lake City?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so did anything occur to bring it up now or recodify it?
Right now, right now, what has happened is the state of South Carolina has not. Approved. They voted down a hate law, and so now the municipalities are stepping up to the table, and they're passing their own hate law based on the criteria set forth from the municipal association.
Yes, to get support from different municipalities. There's several municipalities that's already in the state of South Carolina that has passed this ordinance. And you can actually go on the municipal association website and see which municipalities have already passed it.
Our neighbor is one of them, Florence, passed theirs.
Well, we have the right, we, the right, as the municipality here have the right to make a law more strenuous, or, you know, if you break the law, then the actual, the charge could be more than $500 if you wanted to.
That would be actually discussing and talking with your.
Or it could be more than 30 days in jail.
Probably talking with your state representatives to make, to help them advocate it. You can help them advocate it with the Florence, well, with us, Florence County delegate, delegate legislation to help them advocate it at the State House. So this right here is actually helping us put the hate crime in.
Motion.
Motion.
And if the state were to come up and pass a hate crime, ours would be secondary to what the state does.
Because right now, to my knowledge, it has passed through the House, but not, it's still.
Not the Senate. And I think going into a new year, it will be a dead issue now. They'll have to start back over.
They have to start over.
Yeah, because like I was saying earlier, I was watching the news, and I seen a fellow was walking down the road, and a couple fellows jumped him, and they got them for a hate crime. It was on CNN, so I think it's a good thing, you know, that you have something in place if something was to go down like that in our town, so.
And right now, South Carolina is like the, one of the two states that have not passed a hate crime law yet. Any other questions, council, concerns? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council, mayor and council for your consideration. Resolution 2024.038, final reading. A resolution that mayor and council accepts a bid from Altman Fencing in the amount of $80,000 for all other matters related thereto. This is a bid for the fencing at the airport, which will be paid through grant funds.
Need a motion to approve resolution number 2024.038?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council?
Okay, this is kind of confusing to me. It says mayor and council accepts.
Based on the bid committee's recommendation.
But it's, it's usually written where the city administrator, when that usually?
No, ma'am, this is out of, if it's a bid, a sealed bid, we bring it to mayor and council for your, for your recommend, for the recommendation set forth by the bid committee.
It's kind of perplexing to me, because like I said, normally, it's the, given the city administrator the authority to accept. So in my mind, it makes me feel, when we, were we as council members empowered to accept bids?
It's always come to council for sealed bids. I've been here 18 years, and we've always brought them for sealed bids.
No.
Now, if we're just doing an estimate on a small project, but when they get above this amount, that's, that's above anybody's rim here in the city other than mayor and council.
When I read this, it gives me an impression that the council and mayor sent these bids out, sealed.
No, this saying.
The bid committee did.
To me, it's misleading, the wording of it is misleading. It's empowering mayor and council to do this and.
To accept the bid? Is that what you're, is that what you're confused by? Just stating accept the bid?
For as long as I've been here, unless something has happened, yeah, to mayor and council to accept it, I, in my mind, I didn't pass out any, didn't mail out any bids, did not receive any bids. So I think that this is a part of the day-to-day operations, and normally, we would give you approval to accept, administration. So I, I have, I take issue with that.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. That's all we have in the legislative part. The financial part, which is one month into the new year, July 31st, 2024, period ending. General fund revenue, $272,279. Expenses, $686, $414,000 overspent from the revenue. I will say that our revenues are collected in arrears. We're still waiting for June revenue tax dollars to come in, so June, July is due to us now in that and also in other funds that are due. Those will be put in receivable and put in the appropriate year that they're due in. In the water fund, we have $175,000 revenue, 128 in expenses, 7.4% in revenue, and 5.42 in the expenses and the percent of the budget. In the sewer fund, we have $288,000 collected, 239 in expenses, $48,000 overage, that's 6.9% of the revenue to the budget, 5.75% expenses to the budget. On the storm water, we collected $17,951. We had some expenses in storm water of $4,167, leaving a balance for July of 13, $784. We have, in the reserve for water, current revenues of, current reserves of $6,145 for a year-to-date of $79,885, and that's water in the sewer, $6,000, a year-to-date of $78,146. That's your financials for July 31st, 2024. Mayor and council for your consideration. Bid, I'm sorry, bills to be approved, August 13th, 2024, bills number one through 11.
Need a motion to approve bills items one through 11 for August 13th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council, about any of the bills, items one through 11? None? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Thank you.
Mayor and council, if you would please ask Chief Miles to come up and speak on the report for the police department.
I'd first like to take a second and apologize to Mr. Cooper, I believe it was, the officer that was scheduled to go to that event, is no longer with the department, and that was one that did slip through the cracks. So if you've got a few minutes after this, I'll meet with you, and we'll get squared away on that, we'll square that away.
Thank you, chief.
Going over the statistics for the month of July, we responded to 1,778 calls for service for the month of July, and hitting some of the bigger numbers in that breakdown, that's 523 traffic stops with 155 citations issued from those traffic stops, that's 676 property checks, 158 adult incidents, eight juvenile incidents, we had 31 incidents with arrest, 166 incident reports completed, we had 57 arrest warrants issued, and 28 arrest warrants served for the month of July. Going a little bit further into the, the traffic-related portion, that seems to be a popular topic. The traffic tickets issued, there was 32 vehicle license violations issued, 15 simple possession of marijuana citations issued, seven speeding tickets, three operating uninsured, 20 driver license violations, 19 driving under suspensions, and zero DUIs for the month of July. And again, just like last month, I think that shows that the officers, they're making an abundant amount of traffic stops, an appropriate amount of traffic stops for cities the size of Lake City, and they're issuing citations for cities the size of Scranton, Calhoun. So they're working with a lot of people, they stop, they're not out there hammering anybody, and they're doing a good job. It shows that they're active throughout their 12-hour shifts on both, on both day shift as well as night shift. And the property checks at 676, that's an, that's an astronomical amount of property checks for one month. What they do is they typically, day shift will try to ride by that property location at least twice as well as night shift. However, during the day, that, the vehicle that rides by, it may not be a marked vehicle, it may be an unmarked vehicle, because it may, it could be myself or an investigator who was in unmarked vehicles. So they, even though the number says 676, that's the times it was actually called in on the radio, was the officer actually rode by the house. In reality, that number's probably a little higher than that. And I think that's, that's pretty good as well. So people are calling in, asking us that, that you check their properties, and in doing so, the burglary cases that investigations are seeing, they're trending downward, and if you look at the totals compared to this time last year, it's much lower of actual, where homes were broken into, where entry was actually made and stuff was actually taken and stolen. So I think that shows a downward trend, and I think that's a, that's a good thing. And that is all I have, unless anyone requests me to go further into detail on the numbers.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief Miles. Mayor and council, that's all we have for you this evening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, we have executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, sections 30 dash 4 dash 70, A1 dash 2, for the discussion of personnel, employment, compensation, or appointments, and the receipt of legal advice. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? If none, all in favor, council, show of hands. Thank you.
I have to. Okay. We are coming back in executive session. There are no actions made from executive session. Next, we will go into our council member reports and mayor reports. Starting with Councilman Brown.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for coming out. I want to tell everyone that work for the city, especially Mr. Ricky Sims and his line maintenance crew, for the two days of hard work they put in cleaning out storm drains, ditches, and trying to get everything situated and prepared for the accumulation of water that the city was expecting to have. I think they did an outstanding job, and I want to give them my hats off for them. And also to all the first responders that also been in the weather. And I want to thank everyone for coming out who come, and thank everyone for who's watching on Facebook. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I would like to thank everyone for coming out. Again, I would like to piggyback on Councilman Brown to say thanks to the City of Lake City staff on ensuring that the communities were kept safe during tropical storm Debbie. Also, I would like to thank the young lady that came out from the economic...
Florence County Economic Development.
Florence County Economic Development, Ms. Lynn. Excuse me. Florence County Economic Development, Ms. Lynn. Excuse me. Thank you so much for sharing the information about the employment of the InVision battery plant. I think that that information would be a great asset to our community. Thanks again for bringing that out and forward to us. Other than that, again, just everyone, stay safe, be vigilant, and have a good night.
I did owe Councilmember Brown Cooper's sentiments. Thank you all for coming out. I also did owe Councilmember Brown... Councilmember Cooper... Councilmember Crossley. Statement. Just shout out to Ricky Sims and his crew, Randy Druggers, Chief Druggers, and the rest of the fire department. Hope you guys were safe during the storm. Hope to see you next month. Thank you.
Me too can say the same thing along. For the public work, for the job you're doing with the city. It been a river, but we survived, and that's the main thing. And that's what I see us as, elector officials, coming together and we are surviving. Let's be strong. Things not gonna always go our way. And most of the time, I probably not right, but I stand for right. I stand for what I believe, and I want to be fair to everyone. You know, we can't make the city work by itself. It gonna take all of us collectively to work together to continue to see the growth. We are in a growing state now. You know, when a child start growing, you see different changes. So, we are in a growing stage now. It's election year and everything. And let's keep focused and get people out to the poll. Get them registered to vote, because every vote is gonna count in this election. Make no difference what party you are for. We need everyone to come together and vote. So, my whole thing now, y'all vote. Are you registered? Vote. Are you registered? Because this is what's gonna make a difference. We can stand here, we do policy procedures, but these are little, but we get up to the top. We need the right people at those, in those seat, in those respective place. And I want to give a shout out to our chief and William. A citizen came with a complaint. It was two years she had a car that she were paying tax on, and they were never able to get her title for her car. And when she called me about the issue, and I told her, "I don't know, but I think I can get you to the right people that can help you." And when I called William, and he made an appointment with her, and she...
I want to tell everyone that worked for the city, especially Mr. Ricky Sims and his line maintenance crew, for the two days of hard work they put in cleaning out storm drains, ditches, and trying to get everything situated and prepared for the accumulation of water that the city was expecting to have. I think they did an outstanding job, and I want to give them my hats off to them. And also to all the first responders that also been in the weather. And I want to thank everyone for coming out who come, and thank everyone for who's watching on Facebook. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I would like to thank everyone for coming out. Again, I would like to piggyback on Councilman Brown to say thanks to the City of Lake City staff on ensuring that the communities were kept safe during Tropical Storm Debbie. Also, I would like to thank the young lady that came out from the economic.
Florence County Economic Development.
Florence County Economic Development, Ms. Lynn Wilson. Excuse me. Thank you so much for sharing the information about the employment of the Invision Battery Plant. I think that that information would be a great asset to our community. Thanks again for bringing that out and forward to us. Other than that, again, just everyone, stay safe, be vigilant, and have a good night.
I did owe Councilmember Brown and Cooper's sentiments. Thank you all for coming out. I also did owe Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Cooper, Councilmember Crossley's statement. Just shout out to Ricky Sims and his crew, Randy Jurgers, Chief Jurgers, and the rest of the fire department. Hope you guys were safe during the storm. Hope to see you next month. Thank you.
Me too can say the same thing alone. For the public work, for the job you're doing with the city. It been a river, but we survived, and that's the main thing. And that's what I see us as, elector officials, coming together and we are surviving. Let's be strong. Things not gonna always go our way. And most of the time, I probably not right, but I stand for right. I stand for what I believe, and I want to be fair to everyone. You know, we can't make the city work by itself. It gonna take all of us collectively to work together to continue to see the growth. We are in a growing state now, you know, when a child start growing, you see different changes. So we are in a growing stage now. It's the election year and everything. And let's keep focused and get people out to the poll, get them registered to vote, because every vote is gonna count in this election. Make no difference what party you are for. We need everyone to come together and vote. So my whole thing now, y'all vote. Are you registered? Vote. Are you registered? Because this is what's gonna make a difference. We can stand here, we do policy procedures, but these are little, but we get to the top. We need the right people at those, in those seat, in those respective place. And I want to give a shout out to our chief and William. A citizen came with a complaint. It was two years she had a car that she were paying tax on, and they were never able to get her title for her car. And when she called me about the issue, and I told her, "I don't know, but I think I can get you to the right people that can help you." And when I called William, and he made appointment with her, and she called me back, she was so excited. So things like that, that's what I like to do. I like seeing people smile. I like peace, you know? Me and my, I got six sisters, three brothers. We have little fusses, but let me tell you, we can come together and eat, and we call each other name. We say, "You wanna talk good? Your language is bad," and we just laugh at each other. But then yet, we love one another. So that's all I'm all about. I'm about love. And together we stand, divided we will fall. So let's continue. Be prayerful. You know, you don't have to be a religious person. Be prayerful. Just be love. Just share love. That's all you have to be. You don't have to be holy. Baptist, nothing, but show love to one another. That's my statement for tonight. I love y'all and look forward to seeing all of you that came tonight for this extravaganza.
That's proud.
Look to see y'all next month with all heart and mind together. Love.
Thanks, councilmembers, for your reports. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. And all that is viewing on Facebook, please continue to encourage others to attend our council meetings to be informed and inspired about the growth of our city. I wanted to thank our city staff, which has said a number of times, for my councilmembers, Lake City Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, for being out there during Tropical Storm Debbie. I thanks to the P.I., Mr. Jonathan Laster, for making sure our updates on Facebook for our citizens as well, and councilmembers for making sure that your constituents in your district and entire city get updated through Tropical Storm Debbie. I'm very grateful and thankful to God that we did not have what other municipalities went through during this storm. I wanted to also thank Florence County Emergency Management Department and South Carolina Emergency Management Department for keeping us abreast of about Tropical Storm Debbie. We have a few events that are going on in Lake City. Starting this weekend will be H-Con, this Friday and Saturday. Please join us at the Rob for H-Con. That's Anime Gaming and Entertainment Convention. This is the second year. Gospel on the Green will be September 7th, and we have a lot more in store. Please be informed by our website and our Facebook page to know more and more about our events that are going on in our City of Lake City. Since our last council meeting, I would like to announce my nomination and election to the South Carolina Mayors Association Board and Directors for a three-year term, which was announced at our annual conference in Greenville last month. And I'm very excited and happy to continue to represent our City of Lake City and the state of South Carolina. I want to thank the SBA Administrator, Ms. Guzman, and Congressman Clyburn Office for facilitating a very successful SBA Expo, which was held on July 12th. I think that was a very huge and exciting day for the City of Lake City. So I give my gratitude to those parties, Administrator Guzman and Congressman Clyburn's office. So thank you very much. I hope everyone have a wonderful evening. Please let's continue to keep our city in our daily prayers to keep moving forward in the right direction. And I pray for a safe and successful school year for all our students and our educators. So please have a good evening, and I hope to see you back here next month. I need a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved. Second, all in favor.